Some pictures over there.
I don't think that company would be too bad. Everything is cool in the company now, I guess.
They're tied together a little.
Yeah, they got certain areas they push you to.
Yeah.
This one's present meeting, he want to have a guy in there, but it's on the other one.
Yeah, that's what.
I wonder why they call it.
It's not like me, if I was advertising later, things down my route. But I get the freedom, at least they had to, if they want a hard buy time, they had to stop.
Yeah, if you be charged more than that.
Well, if you prove that you charging more than normal, they'll have you in court. Oh, I didn't know that. You can bring that here. My wife remind me about what we're talking about. Okay, Charlie's going to give a report, sorry, he's got to leave. He's got three points. So he's going to tell you what's going on and then answering questions, you got to do what I'm going to go with your record. He's going to update you, run you up on what you got, what you're drawing down. It's all yours.
Okay, I appreciate it, don't mind. Each of you should have a drawdown request sheet, they're like normally give you. Herzog's final payment is forty-three thousand fifteen dollars and ninety cents. We have to sign certification, I need to have your approval for the city's signed certification of part completion. That will all go into Kevin Keen's combined rural development. As you know, they are shut down right now. So I'm not sure how long they're going to wait before they'll do anything to make payments to you, but you don't have to make payments to the contractor or to us till that money is in. The total amount of drawdown then between us and them is forty-six thousand four hundred eighty-five dollars and forty-five cents. If you would please, when David brings that up during record meeting, just give approval that, I will file here from him tomorrow and I will mail it off to RD and then we'll see what the federal government does and when we get back in service. I'm also going to ask him, if they get back in service, to come down next Thursday afternoon, since we have a bid opening on the other materials down there for the site, to come down and do the inspection at that time with him. If they're not working, it's not impossible, but that's the date I'm going to try to schedule for in case they do get back in business. Under the same token, if you would allow, I'd like to have you guys have a real brief special meeting next Thursday. When we open these bids, it's for the lab equipment at the treatment plant, the control locks and the lights. And once we get those figured out and you can approve or reject, we can get our budget straightened out and maybe we can get some other stuff down there that's come up since then. There's a bill on some entrance wiring that had to be done because the electric company had some on the weatherhead and watered it down in there, the wire rooms room. They replaced it, right now it's not part of the project, I think we usually make it part of the project so it's not out of your pocket. And then a disconnect is not out there on the pole, that they're meter. They did not require it, it's not normally something that goes on most plans when you got disconnected inside, but because of our generator now tied into that point, we don't have a disconnect for it. So we're going to try to be precise on it too, once the budget looks like we can afford to do it, I'll bring all that stuff back to you on separate change order, our contract amount through Herzog. And I think the bids open up at five, did you say?
Exactly.
Four, four o'clock next Thursday. And we'll know within the four-thirty exactly what's going on for our budget stands based on the money we know we have left.
Of course we worry.
Yes.
Have we missed the disconnect?
We didn't miss it.
Really?
No. It never has been. Your plants been operating nobody since eighty-three.
You don't want that generator to be, you gotta have one.
The generator automatic transfer switch does everything you're supposed to on a disconnect. It will operate. It doesn't give you a means to shut that section off as long. The wire runs to the automatic transfer switch. The automatic transfer switch is a smart computer. It will go ahead and operate if your power fails, it will kick on. What you can't do is you can't go out there and simulate something without going through the automatic transfer switch to have it exercised and go into the plant to operate. In order to shut the power off that goes to the automatic transfer switch, there's no disconnect in front of you.
Right. They're really good.
I can't disagree with that, but you got by all this length of time without that.
And we didn't have a generator.
That's true, but you-
It should have been thought, without the bids, nervous, thoughtful, putting that out, should have thought about that. The common answer back, I was sure it got an engineer.
I talked to Charlie today about this, you knew that sometimes. There'd be no active fee from his department on it, it'd just be two ways it could be done. One of them is through the extra money we got, and he can do a work order change. If we find out that the electric company would do it cheaper, there's no engineering fee or nothing, no redraw on or stuff like that, it would be bid who could do it. We would have to get DNR to okay going the other route. They may, they may balk on going out there rather than work change order with them. We don't know, I get that thing where you're about the lights.
Yeah, actually the RD.
RD, I mean.
They've got funding and it's ringing.
Rule relevant, not them. Too many of them.
They have too many ties on the grant money, but it's better than us, they approve it. But as Carl said, I'm also going to ask them, once these bids found the lights, if they're extremely high whatsoever, they will be compared to what you guys have from the electric company. We'll ask them if they'll allow reimbursement back to the city for that cost of the lights, so we pay the electric company for that, and then all you'll have is a month in charge for electricity.
Theirons, you're asking for a meeting, you want us to have a meeting? We have to have a meeting.
If you would please.
We had that meeting on the opening of the bid, that had to be done in a meeting.
And what time, you said it has to be Thursday?
Well, we're down Thursday, open the bids at four o'clock. And I hope to get Kevin over at the same time with an inspection down there. I'm not sure that's going to happen. But in order to take action on the bids, we need to do it as soon as we can, and I'll wait until next month so we get the budget request back in to them and see what items we can put in there.
I'm personally wondering about the time we need to do this, because my last class at CNO was done at four-thirty on Thursdays. And so I need to know, you know, how I, because, you know, just need to know what time we need to do the, have this meeting.
If it works for all you guys, five-thirty is great. You can get down nearby at that time, like you have tonight for your workshop, and we can go right into the meeting and I can tell what we found, what the budget looks like, give you an estimate on the cost for the rest of the items, and then you can make a determination between when to go.
So we don't have to be there at four o'clock?
No.
But we can do it.
No, we need to come out and do it four o'clock, we don't have to be, we were open the bid at four, like your contracts and all that's in. But you don't have to do that in open meeting, you just have to be prepared. But to okay and do anything to act on, we'll have to do that with a meeting. And what you're saying, rather than wait from then to the next meeting, and at that later, and that being done, we can be moving on, but we're getting in the winter. So, I mean, the time, what time do you get back in town?
It's real close, at quarter after five.
Well, I mean, five-thirty to eight, I mean, we'll do whatever has to be done to accommodate what we've been reading. I mean, we could have a form without it, but I'd always prefer that we have all four members in the pocket.
And is this the time that we're going to look, get a chance to look at these things, or is this going to have to be another time that we get to look at what is being done? Not this time, this is just for opening bids, circuits?
I don't know.
Well, you had said something about when it was all done and we could tour it.
No, that's next Thursday also, if we get Kevin.
Wouldn't do that when they're down here, well, I have a good, before you get back, they're probably getting too late, but if any of them here that want to, I'm down here quite often, so anybody, for people that don't get to, sometimes while they're all down here, I get contracts to be there, that's all.
If we can get set up in time and notify, yes, that's what we would do. Final inspection would be held with the council, the funding agency and DNR, as well as the contractor, to say, yes, everything's acceptable, we close the project out.
Well, I know I can be at the meeting, I wouldn't be able to go to the other, unfortunately, I'd like to, but thank you.
Well, I'm sure that if you wanted to, that Daniel or somebody be available the next day or the weekend, or something to show you, you know, what we're done.
That's what I have, it's acceptable to you guys to take action in the meeting, we'll even go on back toward Ralston. I want to make sure you guys are all back, everything understood, ask any questions you want to do.
Is this project finished then, after all that, it is?
Yes, except for this extra stuff that we're trying to get funding through, but that has nothing to do with Herzog. Herzog's work is complete and we're ready to accept it, find out about it. That would issue change, I mean, we paid, and we'll give them wages and any kind of amount of payment, satisfied the property.
So you do a little question, let Charlie get to the bit.
Okay.
Anybody got anything?
Thank you.
Okay, we thought on whatever. You got something, we thought on?
Um, well, I can start on any of these, but I mean, we'll go in order, I mean, Charles Brayman, next thing up is coronation, I was just going to explain in the meeting that we are now coronating, we started that on the nineteenth, I believe, which is before the deadline, the DNR gave, so we did meet that. Since we had a shock to the system, it was kind of strong at first, but now it's more mellowed out and, you know, it's a lot more acceptable to people's noses, let's say, and skin, so that's, that's going well and it's up and running. The health insurance, I'm having a hard time getting quotes for Affordable Care Act. I had an account set up and then it got deleted, I tried to set up another one just so I could look at some rates for myself, and then it wouldn't let me set it up, it kicked me out. Then I read that Missouri literally passed a law that people who are navigators, which advise people between private insurance and the Affordable Care Act, have to be licensed insurance agents, otherwise they can be fined. And I don't know what their definition of navigator is, but I almost feel uncomfortable playing that role until this thing gets, you know.
The Republican Party don't want it, the Missouri Republican have fought it, that's why everything that passed is to hinder the health thing. Nobody's wanting to get a chance to work one way or the other.
Yeah.
It's law, it should be given chances fail or pass, but you shouldn't be able to block everything, but that's all that is.
It is a Republican, and Missouri has the lowest rating as far as trying to get this thing up and running, they bought it all the way through. And since our next meeting is not until after the open enrollment closes for Frank and Michael's insurance, you know, I'm pretty much thinking, let's just go with the MCACP that they have now, since we've already taken the plan, and just get them enrolled and just kind of-
I was going to say, I thought we approved the briefing here, we approved that last week.
Yeah, we approved the, we approved the plan, but I think you guys were kind of wanting to see if we could save some money with the Affordable Care Act, but since it's kind of a train wreck, it will, it will stick. We'll just go with what we agree with this, I think we're at the PP one thousand, I think it was, is what we went with, so I was going to explain that. And then, yard sale issues and ordinances, I went online and found just a couple of ordinances from other cities.
I've got some too, me and Joanne.
Did you get some more?
Yeah.
And I was just wanting your guys' input on like, how many days, how many times per year, is there going to be a permit required or, you know, a fee involved if there is a permit, how to deal with the signs, just so I can get your guys' input on how I would go about writing our own ordinance, like when we get your input, you know, before we, you know, if there is will to even do this, but I'm just blooming it out there.
Well, I don't think that we should necessarily charge a fee.
Okay.
But I also don't think that people should be able to have a yard sale for six, seven, eight days in a row, because I don't consider that a yard sale.
Yeah.
You know, I would think a yard sale would be one or two days. And then I think maybe a limit would be like, once a month or something like that.
Yeah.
And like, like I've said before, I think, I think we should follow Perry Bill's example, seventy-two hours once a month.
But that's not, that's not open ten hours. I mean, you got to spell it out, if you don't spell it out, you're not-
It'll fall the way around.
But I agree, but it's not supposed to be a business, a yard sale is supposed to be a clean out, and you're-
And not a business.
But it's not supposed to be a business. If it's a business, you need to store and collect taxes.
And if you're having a yard sale every day for a month, I would consider that a business somewhere.
But I haven't read these, it's my fault I haven't read the order to yet, but I do know that things need to be put away, not covered up. I mean, you can cover them up one night, you know, regular.
Into the next day, but not early.
Seventy-two hours, that's, that's a lot of time.
That's about three days.
Yeah, I think most people, they start it on Friday afternoon and they go Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Right, and by Sunday.
The same charge should give plenty of time.
Is that what they would give them to do that?
Oh, don't quote me on it, but forty-eight, seventy.
I thought forty-eight hours, most, most times an hour for wear of the landlord, I didn't read it.
Well, if you do, start at Friday evening, but Sunday by Sunday, then that is forty-eight hours, okay, so let's, yeah, forty-seven, about forty-eight.
Friday evening, that one, Friday evening, Sunday evening, forty-eight hours, and that's fine. Now, I wouldn't have a problem to put an exception in, or I would think the board would, that own that fifty mile yard sale, they actually start on Thursday.
Yes, right.
An exception could be made, you know, for a community wide, or something of that nature.
So the spring one that some people have in the past participated in, I think in April or something, that would be part of that forty-eight hours, that would be-
More than likely, but I mean, if, if a bunch of them that's dead inside, they need it like Thursday night and start like they do the six months, I think an exception could be made, I don't think it should be an alarm, but it should be a real organizer, not an individual that comes in every time, wants to start Thursday to Friday, I don't think that should be an exception, but if the community are together and they want to have a Thursday and then Friday and Saturday, Sunday, you know, then you might make an exception, but you should have the legal way to do it. But that's not an individual doing it for a business, and that's what some of them are doing. But that one is pitiful, it's pitiful.
That's what brought us here.
That's what brought it. And we have another individual that's always got stuff on sale, and it's a problem. I get complaints here and there, I really get complaints on this town here on Picklemore, or Ten thirty Road, or whatever you call it. I don't mind taking, like, I ain't taking running, I ain't taking where they're going, and it's pitiful down here.
Well, I'm glad to hear that we're not talking about charging a fee.
No, I, but I do think that permits wouldn't be a bad thing. A permit wouldn't be a bad thing, I mean, you know who's got it and we claim the roof to them.
But you know when they're starting.
No, but I don't think there should be no money involved, I mean, they, they, a lot of permits, it can get with that.
Really cost to put it in the paper, some people, you know, if you put it in the papers, there's a cost for that, plus, I know, I really make more than twenty dollars, you know, and so, because I don't charge much on, I don't, I don't.
That's what it's supposed to be for, and I, but if first you get the permit, then you know who's doing it, you know, it's like when you can, they can click, get into the roof, now, I'm not pushing, and if the board don't want, we're going to do it. But if, you know, you're going out of a yard sale, you don't do it just tonight, you do it tomorrow, I mean, you use a plan, we can do it. So if there be no problem at the top, I'd say, oh, they got the permit, and they know when you have it and how long.
A permit would be a good thing, as long as, you know, we don't charge.
I know, I would say that, any people like you say, most yard sales, some yard sales are very lucrative, but most of them are cleaned out and polished and everything, and there's not very much money, you can go buy clothes for fifty cents, hundred dollars, you know, ain't much money there.
Right. Is there a way to see that they take their signs down on the street?
Well, we, that's going to be, we discussed that, that was coming up. The signs have to be removed no later than Monday morning. You know, if they haven't, they didn't wait till they get up Monday morning, if they got the, but by Monday morning, and they should be restricted on who they poke them. But I don't know, we don't have control, I don't know, I don't like to come in very unhappy with people putting them on their poles and that.
Especially when they don't take them down and they're up for months and months and months.
And it ain't long to their poles, it's full of staples and nails and screws and... And we got one that's been sitting down here on the corner, a week ago, I could tell I ran over, but I hit the ditch too close to the ditch. But it's been out there all the time, every weekend, yard sale, I think that's what it says, nobody can read it, look at the two small prints going around the curb, you read that, you're running ditch, you're trying to read it. But the time should be removed, and-
So, we can't, we say Monday, if they have the yard sale in the middle of the week, so should I say forty-eight hours after the completion of the yard sale?
Four to four.
All right, twelve hours, you know, after completion, but not today.
Yeah, I think twenty-four would be one more.
Yeah, they can have it, through the week, it don't have to be a week, nine, ten of them have done it on weekends with their traffic.
I'm just trying to hear from you.
I have met the different towns ordinances lately, this has been discussed one time a long time ago, and we basically all read it, just never ever went to anywhere, so it seemed like the board is all more in favor of doing something directly.
I don't think there's a problem with that.
Not at that, we almost did, but he backed off a little bit, we had one guy that was getting pretty regular things, but he backed off, but these people ain't going back off. But it's a good thing to have a wouldn't like that, then you don't have to worry about that now.
Wow, and what about fine for violating the ordinance, we got any ideas there?
Well, our-
Give this thing some teeth, so when Mark goes out there, you know, for cheap money, it's like.
Our, we got an ordinance that says that if it's not specified, it could be any order from twenty-five to five hundred. These are, we have, we got an ordinance that specifies.
How much the words violate.
But it also says that our ordinance, if it's not specified, if I'm not saying you, it's any word from twenty-five to five hundred, that it could be any one of them, or are the judge, pro, pro-aid them. But I don't, I mean, we ain't wanting to hang nobody, we just want to stop the process. I mean, we can put a trial on it, but if I agree to one, or you can just leave the time that I hope.
If they do, you know, get another one.
Well, right, I want to give this thing some teeth, you know, so.
It could also be-
See if we run into a problem, and then we may have to analyze, I mean, I would make it a big-
You could also, just like Clyde said, I haven't worked, if you give it, if you violate it, then you could lose your right to have a yard sale for a week.
That sounds like fair.
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea.
And if it's, because we really don't have a terrible problem with this in town here, I'm sure, do we?
Not at the present time, but if you got an ordinance, then you won't have a problem. Because the people that we're talking about, they didn't have any sort of problem, because no one's going to win that, but this would be valid, no one would worry about them. Because I don't, the reason they problem, most people don't do stuff like that, but you always got to have a language on something, what I want to do. Okay, we pretty well agree on what we do, if you agree on it, I mean, we'll pretty well let him work up a ordinance on what we talked about here, next week, next meeting day, next month, he'll have it together, we, we'll work on the work session, have it together, and then we'll just pass it, our failure at the next round of the week, if that's okay.
So we're not doing anything with it tonight at first?
No, no, we have to get a new get-
Right, I just wanted some ideas on what to write up, you know, that you got.
And really, it's going to be in the newspaper here, and then you probably going to get a few phone calls, some of them like it, some of them won't, but I think in general, nobody wants a yard sale next to them every week, every weekend, it's, it's disturbing.
I do have one question. Okay, if they come and get a permit, how good, how long is that permit good for, is it just one for?
Get that one, get that one.
Get that one.
Because I read in some of these, where when they got a permit, they let them keep it, you know, they could have a yard sale with that one permit for a whole year.
That'd be up to the board to say, but I, I would personally agree.
But I, but I don't think that's a good idea, if you use one permit for a whole year, because-
They have no accountability.
Right.
They can say, well, I didn't do it last week, I'm going to do it this week.
Well, if you get rid of-
It's going to turn into constant.
If we do that, like we're talking, you know, if you use it, you can take it, not keep it, no, but the issue for a year.
Then you're kind of-
Right. I think it should, firstly, I don't know anybody, just a couple, I know two people that we got a problem with, for sure, and some, well, I know three, we're getting one, this could be a problem too, but that's why I want the business operating there. But, you know, we need to stop it before it gets tough, and there are people that put stuff out in the yard for sale, and I'm talking about furniture and whatnot and things, all the time. This will come with that, they, they, some people going to get mad with it. I know I got tables and chairs out there all the time, they'll want, what's the knowing out there? That's a business, that's not the yard sale.
Right.
And you shouldn't be running a business like that, and make you get the taxes and things, and click. If yard sale not supposed to be a business. You got to sit down and jump in, and you folks like this, that's it.
There you go.
Okay, we, we basically all agree?
Yes.
So, so the permit should be for specific dates, and if it's a rain out, then they come get another one?
If it's a rain out, it could be scheduled in the following weekend or something like that.
Like get like nine, ten days?
But if they have it, you know, if they have one day in a cold, and then it rains out, that just draws the bar, that's the bad luck.
Well, and they're not paying for the permit, so that's cool, so they don't have it, and they go, you know, you said.
If you get in the studio, go, well, I operate a day and have it rain, lost half days, I'm going to have another one next week, you know, you got, you got one.
So let's drive it.
I've negotiated, give you kind of that, you got, that's a problem.
Well, they have to have a free enterprise in the American way, you know, take away annual rights, just have some guidelines, so.
Okay, next item is sunshine law compliance update. Got a call from the Attorney General's office, that Casey Lawrence, and she wanted to know why that last meeting we had, the budget meeting, I referred to it as a special meeting, and that's just because I've over typed some previous, that's what they called it then?
That's what I called it.
Well, they said that they don't like the word special in front of a meeting, because it, it, some people would confuse that with meaning that it's a closed meeting. And I'm thinking, no one would think that, but then literally a week later, I'm helping a county organization rewrite their bylaws, and in their bylaws it says special session, referring to a closed session, I'm like, well, there you go, I guess they're right, so I'm not going to be using the word special anymore when it comes to meetings, because I want to do right by the Attorney General's.
When we do, call it a second meeting.
Which they call a meeting, or open meeting, you know, or, I think just meet, you know, and the reason I call it special, you know, because it wasn't on regular, or a second Thursday meeting, you know.
I just said the word, you walk over, we have a special meeting, that's what I learned.
Those were not.
But it don't mean, I mean, it just means it. I mean, special means for a certain particular thing, we have a special meeting to take care of a certain- We have a special meeting to take care of a certain problem, I agree with you doing it. But anytime you call a special, you have an agenda, and you don't need any kind of. If you call a meeting for a certain thing, that don't think you can take care of it.
Well, we just need to find a different word, if we need to, there's a source out there we can look.
Be careful, I mean, I don't.
Just well, but, yeah.
If I'm not mistaken, and, uh, all of these hand buildings and things you guys, they talk about special meetings. One of the new employer, new, uh, altered relations and things, and different things you do, and duties, and calling a special meeting. Didn't we like that word that you did in that book someplace? I'd have to tell them, I, I don't.
Right, I mean.
But we want to do a thing the Attorney General said, that don't.
Right, they tell me to jump, I'm gonna jump, so, yeah.
And not lie.
Yeah, exactly. I think they, they do know. Well, but I, I sent Mike everything to him for the rest of the year. But I think it's good, I'm like, it's like, get three lessons.
Well, if they have, if they have a definition of special as one thing, then we have to comply with their definition of special, I would say, you know. Or it might mean something different to us.
Exactly, so I wanna be on the same page they're on, so they don't like it, we, you still do.
Yeah. I don't have a problem, not yet. It's just weird that after all these years, and I've never seen a meeting rugged and regular, when they call it a special meeting. Never, we only call it a special, it's weird that all of a sudden, but I don't have a problem, I'm scared because of third meeting, second meeting, because I'll get a meeting, it don't make sense, does it? Okay, it won't happen no more.
Nope, it won't. I don't watch it, it won't be.
We gotta let it on the rule, we won't get a letter on violation.
Yeah. All right, next thing. And you should have a sheet, I just did the first page, just gotta say, the paper, the one that has NNI at the top of it. Manufacturer, news incorporated. Now, this.
Oh, here it is.
Um, okay, the previous clerk, um, Dottie Franklin. Took out a listing, is what it looks like, with this organization, Missouri Manufacturer's Register. Um, hundred and seventy-two dollars to list our water departments.
And what, I mean, what, what was it for? That's what I wanted, what was it for?
Yeah, exactly, we can't sell water, you know, whoever wants to buy water from them, and we can't sell it to them, so there's no reason to be advertising our water department for anything, you know, but that's, this, you know, that's just my thinking on it, but I, I don't know who caught it, um, if it was you or Joanne, but, um, there was a, there was a check sent to them for a hundred and seventy-two dollars, and there was a stop payment put on that check. So, they didn't get paid, the, the, the listing was already published. Now, their perspective on this is, you know, I first tried to tell them, well, she wasn't authorized to, to do this. Well, they backed the page where she signed, and right underneath it, it says authorized to, so.
They kind of got us.
I mean, they, they did nothing wrong, I mean, even though they're not the best listing on the Better Business Bureau, they, they asked her, they had her sign it, they fulfilled on their end, and we stopped paying it. Now, we negotiate with them, they're willing to take half, so half of one seventy-two is eighty-six. So, we can pay the eighty-six and be done with this issue, or we can just tell them, sorry, we are not gonna pay it, and see if they fulfill on turning us over to a collection agency. So, it's.
This is just came through the water company, Dennis, do you know anything about it? It's a king through the water.
Dennis didn't have nothing to do with that, nobody on the board had anything to do with it.
No, it didn't come through the board.
Nobody, we didn't, Dennis didn't, nobody, nobody, Dottie didn't, all of them.
Yeah, you want copies of the listing and her signature?
No, I, I already have some, thank you, I, I contacted the, uh, company this morning, I asked you, okay, I asked you, because you wanted to get it for me.
Well, if you let them do, uh, the, I don't know. All right, man, uh, if, uh, she got a little report that she did on it, researching it, come here.
Okay, I have some too, so, I, you do?
Yeah, I, just through, just through the Better Business Bureau.
Okay.
I, I don't know if I really am going for a little of that. But just about to say, you can.
You give your opinion of what you think of the company based on what you found out.
Well, from what I found out from the company, they've had, um, and they have, uh, a total of forty-nine complaints against us in the past three years, they've been given a B rating, and a lot of it has been aimed at, um, uh, poor sales presentation using dishonest sales practices. And it showed one company where they had, apparently, they had always advertised with them in the past couple of years, and I guess the people at this company took it upon themselves that they were gonna do it again. But it says that, um, it says, the company said they didn't want to advertise with them, the company disregarded the request and sent a bill anyway, and did the advertisement. They were not happy with the previous advertisements, and wasn't going to pay. And the response from this company here was, uh, the company authorized and paid for advertising, but the conversation was not recorded, and signed documentation was not, was not present, so they were credited on hand voice, but we have signed.
We got signed.
We have signed documentation.
I just have a problem believing that Dottie would do this without somebody telling her to do it, because she, this was, this was not like that, it just.
She obviously wasn't here long enough to know what she.
Well, she was.
I, I didn't give it to her, did you?
Of course not, not me.
Did you, so who did?
I don't know, that's, yeah.
Well, I figured, there we go again, try to find something to say.
Well, she's, no, I'm just saying that, it just doesn't seem.
Well, they, somebody did, and we thought they could approve here that it would be authorized, she would come to, and I damn sure didn't know nothing about it.
Right, and I'm just guessing, she probably just got a sales call on the phone, some slick salesman, oh, this ad, you know, you know, and probably.
I'm doing it all week.
Yeah, probably told her, you're, you, you know, you wanna redo your subscription, sign this, so.
Yeah.
I don't know what the exact, you know, for my time, but, you know, I, I think you're probably right, she wouldn't have gone out of her way to run an ad to advertise our water department, I'm sure they contacted her, and she just made a decision on the fly.
This is a bad, it's down, she, not giving them all her.
We should do, take the half and get some hindrance and.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think if they've got it down to half, we ought to just pay.
Negotiated that.
Yeah, I got it done.
He might work on this for.
If you got it down to half, I think we ought to just pay.
We'll, we'll take care of that in the, if that on it, then.
It is.
Yes, it is.
We'll take care of that in the regular meeting, we just discuss it here, when we get done, we, we're not wanting to do the tour. I, I don't like paying, don't get it wrong, because I know that somebody used a sales case, and, uh, and cheated no longer, never. And she did it with.
But the thing of it is, if we don't pay it, and they do turn it over to a collection agency, is that gonna end up costing us a lot more money?
Well, I, I mean, they don't owe you that, that's just a security act, it's not gonna file no lawsuit for a hundred and something dollar, but it will show somewhere on the record that we got a lawsuit, being in our, our collecting agent, or, it wouldn't even really make a difference, but it's that. This way it goes away, we done with it. They, they collecting agents that call people for bills they don't owe all the time, and want to turn it over to a lawyer, thing they don't go on with. But to get it behind it, so, seventy, whatever.
Hey, well, it's one seventy-two, they'll take eighty-six, and, you know, if, if we didn't pay it, and they went to a collection agency. You know, the collection agency, in order to get a judgment against us, would literally have to come to this county.
Yeah.
File a small claims suit, you know, take us to court, get a judgment, and with the court cost and the stuff, it probably might not be worth it, but I bet I get a phone call or a sweep. So, and, yeah, I'm just saying, you know, but I'm not gonna deal with them, but.
We do want a letter, they didn't, definitely, by, I'm by the other, that they will settle for that.
Yeah, it, 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 it.
Yeah, David, I can, I can see how she thought she was supposed to do this, just by the way it's worded. It just asks, how, how would you, uh, please, how would you like your company's listing to appear? I mean, it's probably something she thought, that's what we always did, and.
Oh, yeah, and I, and I get them too, I get them from these, like, fancy old agents things, you know, what, you're listening this year, I'm like, no, no.
Assuming that you're, that you already, or she may have assumed we were already doing that, and, yeah, and we should just continue it.
Right, right.
And that, that was one of the complaints that this company did make, uh, so they had, so.
All right, next item is a grant opportunity, um, I think I put a copy of, just the first page of that, well, um, in your notes, um, I, I talked to Charlie about this, he's like, no, you don't want to do this. So, but, um.
Basically, we changed, because we're not set up for, and something has to be already in the process, because we only got four days to it.
Yeah, um, he, he, exactly, yeah, because we would already have to have, like, the signs in place for the project, ready to go, you know, and just seeking funding, well, we don't have anything written out, we don't have, you know. Uh, plus, we would have to match, you know, ten percent of this, whatever we decided to do, um, and, and then he said, well, this is just a scheme to get you to borrow money from over, and he really didn't think it was a good idea, but I wanted to let you guys know, if, if, in case there's any projects that you do want.
We can't afford ten percent of anything. If we give it a hundred percent, we will look at it, and you don't have to put an insurance on or nothing else.
There you go.
Well, my, my question was, if everything is complete, why would we need that, is that what you're saying?
I, I was wondering if there's any other projects you guys, you know, or.
If we have something come up later, we can apply for it.
Well, this, there's only going for, maybe more weeks.
Right, yeah, I, they filled out it is our hands before.
Grants come to go dollars, I mean, but Charlie Ray, we discussed it, we're, we can provide them, say, there, he was there, or. And he said, this is what the company, they said, it's a bang, it got designed, got drawn up, ain't got no money, and they can turn it over to them and get a grant right now, I can give you one of it. Something that they've been trying to do for some time. He said, that's a quick fit for it, it's paid for a few of them companies down in Bay, need to do it, and need to fund, and they want a lot of money. They want a lot of money, they make money from money.
Well, this says it's not a loan.
But they still owe them money. But they quit out, yes, go ahead.
What that, what that is for, is basically for engineering designs services and stuff, that cover is your engineering designs. You still have to have money to do the project, either you come it out of your own pocket, or you borrow from them. Okay, that's just to pay for the engineering design.
It says, for engineering, of course, services.
Well, we, we, we can't get nothing done in time, I mean, and, and, and we're out of projects, we, we call it back to death, we're gonna throw some.
Yeah, the grant will pay for the engineering and.
That's enough. Then, then, stop, that's enough, that's over.
That's all, I'm gonna get tired, isn't it?
Then, if you guys got anything else, you can go work on. Boy, you get a long smoke, you gotta take it in there.
Oh, wow. A long. Oh, one good thing too, when I talked to the lady, I talked to this Karen Weiss-Muller, that was part of that, and, uh, you know, and other thing, and she did give us, you may have it already, but there's a phone number called Info USA to remove us from the National Brokers List if we don't want to get solicitations like this. Cause that's, or, you know.
I like to know the calls, but it don't work.
It does, I still get it on my cell phone, I get it on my cell phone.
I've had my cell phone number long enough now, I'm getting them on it, and I've had my business phone, they're listed, and all of my home phone has it, but I'm getting all kinds of twisted, and all the time, I get one on my, if I don't recognize the number, I don't, and I mean, it's a local number, but I get numbers, and they're codes I never even heard of, but, I mean, I don't, I don't have an agency, so I would. When they get mine, they just let it ring five, like they're gonna get a damn, uh, buzz in the ear because my factory chain's going up. Okay, that's the first thing, that's it, right there. You got to do it over here?
Well, I got four, but yours is.
Yeah? Hey, man.
The lessons lies day by day, sir.
Wonderful world.
The same with, with Dottie, that sounds all too clear, you know what I mean, it's like, you get so much paperwork and electronic crap nowadays, and, you know, so much of it is.
It was, it was my business, I would pay it.
Yeah.
But I ain't going to subject the city to it, because if I, if you call somebody, somebody to get something out, somebody ain't authorized, you know, they, they trial on that. And then they probably found out she was a new clerk, calling to, and that ain't, and it pays. You signed everybody's paycheck with a bye, am I supposed to read something into that? And it could be.
Straighten up and fly right.
All right, thank you, sir.
You remember, guy, how you doing?
Oh, little bit older, a little bit slower, you know.
Well, not the time to get caught up with the rest of us, is that?
Now, you get so much, see so much stuff like that, and the online stuff, if anything, you see the worst, it's like, you know, just click on this little button here, you know, and, uh, then it's like, do you accept terms and conditions, you know?
Right, and they're number six print, and they're like six pages long.
Well, tell me, really, things you get, I mean, if you don't respond, that means you agree. You know, and I go have my stuff in a case, I don't agree.
Well, and, and actually, I got one today from, uh.
You got a couple of these, you got.
Oh, yeah, um, from, uh, QuickBooks, Stan, you don't respond by November thirteenth, we're gonna update you with important, you know, payroll changes for, uh, four hundred dollars.
Yeah, have y'all heard about the, the practice of cramming? I read this like two, three years ago from AT&T, with my landline in the city, you know, where I'm, you know, I'm doing five, you know, my, my landline bill is pretty much flat, you know, doesn't vary by more than a dollar a day from month to month for the better part of twenty years, and all of a sudden, I look at it, it's like, wait a second, there's a thirteen dollar swipe on this, you know? And I look at it, it's because, you know, they've added a section for third-party billing.
Oh.
You know, and suddenly, I've, I've picked up a twelve dollar ninety-five cent bill on my landline because of, you know, technical services, it's like, well, no, I have had no technical experience, you know? So, I call up AT&T, and tell them, you know, okay, um, there's a problem here, I've had no dealings with the company, with this company, and said, please share, it's not anybody else in your household, and it's like, there's just me.
Right.
You know, and, and the, uh, the AT&T rep was, you know, she was operating from script, obviously, she, you know, it's like, well, there should be an eight-hundred number listed on your bill for this third-party company, you can call them, and talk to them, it's like, no, wait a second here, I have had no dealings with this company, that you guys have accepted a bill from, for me, you know?
This is on your landline?
Yeah.
That's odd, I mean, I dealt with a lot of this when I, I worked, you know, at Accent for Sprint.
Yeah.
Those five-digit short code text things.
Yeah, what is, of course, cramming per se, is a practice. Yeah, what is, of course, cramming per se is a practice where anybody with your name and your number, which of course, if you've got a landline, you know, is everywhere on the internet, you know, uh, theoretically, according to FCC regs, you know, some company on the west coast, which is where this was from, you know, could start charging you money through your phone carrier. And the phone carrier, according to FCC regs, has to accept those charges. And it's supposedly your call up to fix it all. So I immediately got online and did a search and it's like, they had, you know, AT&amp;T had had hundreds of complaints about this company under one name or another.
Right.
You know, and, and, you know, the, the complaint, complaints had said, you know, it's like, yeah, you can call them. And they'll put you on hold for twenty minutes.
Oh, great.
You know, so it's like, this is.
Yeah.
So I called AT&amp;T and told them basically, no, I'm, you know, and, you know, eventually, you know, it's like, it got to the point where next bill came in, I just subtracted the first twelve ninety-five, plus another twelve ninety-five.
There you go.
Third bill came in, I subtracted three times, you know? Fourth bill came in, and by that point, they shut off my, you know, they, they shut off my long distance service. So I called, you know, AT&amp;T again and said, I want to talk to a manager this time. The first time I called, you know, the rep said, oh, yeah, I'll have, you know, I'll have a manager call you back within twenty-four hours. That never happened. So I just proceeded to face, you know, the, when they shut off my long distance, it's like, I want to talk to a manager now, you know? And it still took the better part of another two months, supposedly because, you know, things are so squirrely between, you know, one department of AT&amp;T and another. But I immediately told my mom, you know, because it turns out that in the telecom industry, you know, the default for that kind of thing is that we'll be glad to accept third party billing on the part of our customers, you know, under FCC regs. You have to actually tell your carrier, I do not want third, you know? But of course, increasingly, it's getting to the point where people are going to start using their cell phones to pay bills and stuff like that.
Right.
You know?
Well, I said, I gotta remind you, I, I gotta block the guys from getting those, uh, text messages that cost nine 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 for.
Oh, yeah.
Your daily horoscope. We haven't had anything like that, but they, they just show up one day unless you proactively text back, stop, request a trial, or cancel, yeah, for a month.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's awfully handy, you know, particularly the way that it's, it's apparently, you know, from what I, the research I did, you know, it's like, the FCC has told the telecom people, yeah, this is the way we're gonna do it. And it's like, it is so groggy and.
No, the AT&amp;T, AT&amp;T's getting a piece of that money, you know they are, as your lobby and then FCC, you know?
The, cause that's what the AT&amp;T, you know, told me, you know, it's like, well, you need to sort it out from them and then we will gladly reimburse your, in the meantime, you know, those three, four months worth of my money that they're, you know, repaying the, uh, the.
And interrupting your service to boot.
Uh, yeah, so, but.
All right, well, I'm gonna get a smoke here if you want to go out.
But, uh, so, you know, what, whatever that was, you know, doesn't surprise me, is, you know, the internet has been, you know, shizzling.
It's very evil though because it's so far along, you can't operate without it.
Oh, yeah, and that's what I'm afraid of, but, you know, when I first did the research on this cramming stuff, first thing I did was call my mom and tell her that she needed to call AT&amp;T and let them know, you know, that she did not want third party billing allowable. Cause, you know, it was, it was like a news report, such, you know, some people who don't look at their monthly. You know, they be looking at all of a sudden, you know.
Well, you know, a company wants a bill, look like a brochure, that thing.
Oh, well, yeah.
So he didn't meant to like that, just like mine too.
Yeah.
For many different listeners, I may be doing, of course, we don't pay no bills online. We do not. I will not pay no bills online. But now I do buy them. I do buy my cards online, you know, I pay for my card online. That's the only bill that we pay. That's my business.
Yeah, well, see, that kind of thing even makes me nervous, you know, it's like I try not to deal anything online with, with like, something that I, you know, like Amazon, you know? But some of it, you know, it's like, how did my name end up on your list, you know, and that makes me nervous because it's like, if they're able to get your name, you know?
They should have to be authorized by you before the telephone company, each individual, before they can hold it down. Make sure that's all being verified before they.
Yeah, that would have been, would have been nice.
But that would be simple. They wouldn't want to do that.
No, well, cause again, you know, AT&amp;T, according to the scheme that they had, you know, it would have been good for them for, you know, interest, the three or four months, you know, off my account, you know, like, uh, and it wouldn't have been a great deal of money. It would have been pennies on the dollar for sure because it wasn't like I called them last hour or anything. But still, oh, once you start, you know, adding up pennies, you know, for, you know, thousands and thousands of customers, then you're starting to talk a little bit of real money, you know?
One more day, huh?
One more day.
One more night. One more night.
Yep.
I know they can't get away with it. Maybe they're going to, I need to work, I gotta.
Yeah, I told him. He, and he said, you better go to the bank and get some money for me.
I don't.
I thought we must have all been chilled a little bit. Oh, no, the gentleman Paul's gonna be getting his coffee. We're gonna be out.
I sleep on the table and you come over and wipe it.
My money, so I'm gonna wipe it.
Oh, come on.
You done with the pool?
No.
Oh, okay.
I'm gonna do, I did myself, but I got, we've been tired. I got one, you backing down fast morning, can you?
I really backed down, appreciate it.
I bet. Look at him, I think. We can change our mind real fast, but I think we can prevent it too.
I can't. All of this, I heard it's hard to go.
Oh, but we, we've had, we've been tired. We had one card we were doing today. We just got it on today. I didn't get, I didn't change it to them in there. I thought we tried to get our yesterday coming out of the factory. We tried to grab that card, went out to the man, and I went up to the devil and it chilled like. But I didn't forget, forget it one day. We got some.
Did I ask the woman to take it? Take one?
Who wants?
Name, working right? Right, I'm not gonna thank him.
This, this came out May, this is.
I don't, I can never bump every table like that. I ain't never bumped it. I, I thought they had like a very.
Where it's at?
Yeah.
No, I, oh, we're back here.
Everybody, my brother called today talking about going out beach. I ain't no matter. I thought, well, you can be on a little bit.
He's hired before your board?
I ain't no more hanging.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, before those. Before you guys, right before you guys come in this morning.
He was probably going to die too. Now he thinks.
This is getting smoky. Huh? This is, this is getting smoky, Jack, you're like.
Oh, I probably have. Yeah, smoky, Jack, just seems a little too casual.
Something good camera.
Yeah. Right, yeah. Oh, man.
Something good camera and somebody good actually knows how to use it.
All those pictures you took of me with that, what camera you had there?
It was that one of you and forty-seven of my food.
Yeah, the camera, yeah. Would you, uh, would you open your. Don't take your picture.
Oh, no.
Would you care? I mean, cause we just done done gotten it all.
I can do that long time, but I don't.
You know, things for reasons.
I still going down there. I had, I did have a poor, I was cool in Colorado from my. I'm out there where playing. Damn, cool, looking, good charge, you know? Anything does cost a venture, dude.
Yeah, we're, we're special, dude.
No, boy, he don't shut the door. He got, he not really like that. But he come by now, he can't hear you.
That's right, that's right.
I took mine, it was like, you're gonna be charged a three thousand, what you got for it? There's a great line.
Yeah.
Hey, I support the, I support the sport. Hey, you know, I carefully do. Not trying to grow you or anything. Yeah, I thought, sure, take down my mouth. I got eggs. I get a steak or two from hell. I got a good big chicken egg. I thought lifetime, when I come, I got eggs, I'd be getting the health taking.
I am made to live in the United States of America. In this republic which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who come? Alderman Cassu.
Here.
Alderman Franklin.
Here.
Alderman Doc.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Who moved the agenda?
I'll have to make a motion to remove the agenda.
One second.
Move your meeting ticket on paper.
Aye.
The vote. Tell it for nobody that we don't have to take the party, but can finish the agenda.
Make a motion to remove the agenda.
I see.
Move your meeting ticket on paper.
Aye.
Vote.
Me.
Okay. And for Charlie Ray, he's gonna let me do that, um, we need a, we've got the drawdown for these engineering fees, thirty-four hundred sixty-nine dollars fifty-five cents for area completion of this thing. Um, maybe one of the votes to authorize this, uh, this meeting. And then also, uh, approval to have a meeting Thursday the seventeenth at five thirty PM uh, for selecting or for opening the biz for the special equipment for this new street plan.
We don't have to vote on the meeting before five thirty till. We can vote that. Because, because anything could happen between now and then, but we do need to vote on the drawdown.
Vote on the bottom, drawdown.
The one that we discussed during the, all of the drawdown that we discussed.
Move your meeting ticket on paper.
Aye, aye.
Vote.
Uh, coordinate it, complete that selfish plan. So he come online and I personally had no complaints. I don't know if he is or not, but everybody was real grateful with.
Could I ask if, is, did they, um, you know, was out to?
They said everything was not, everything was right.
All through the, the whole system.
They went through that, they said it was all right. The building was right, everything was right, everything we were doing.
Well, I'm, I had, I know that, um, Mr. Bobe told me that I might smell chlorine, but I never have, so I just.
I, I got one quick look today. It's the first time that I really noticed it. I run some water, something like this. Seemed like there for a second and then it was, it was gone, but I did smell it. But normally I don't, I've never smelled in the shower or anything. I turned water on or something and I smelled it a little bit. But I'm real pleased with how, how great it's going. I mean, I really thought it would be calm for a while. I'm gonna try to get it going, but so far, that's done, good, uh, health insurance.
Yeah, um, we, we've already selected the DPO one thousand with a preserving solidary health care plan. Um, and so that's what we're gonna do when, when open enrollment, which opened yesterday. So I'll go ahead and send their stuff in, just to kind of let you know that we are.
Well, we had to make a motion.
To actually do them, uh, because we haven't taken them.
I thought we already had.
Well, we did, yeah, right, we did.
And anything on marks?
I haven't received anything yet. Now, it might come directly to him, uh, but if it does, he'll give it to me. But I, I have no price. I have no dates. I, I don't know why they're slower, but I haven't received anything on this. Okay, so that you're just gonna go ahead and notify the agents and move on with it. Yard sale, um, and maybe make a brief statement.
Yeah.
Right, uh, considering doing, uh, we're gonna be working on doing an ordinance. Uh, and some of the things that we kind of agree on having in, in that ordinance is, um, one yard sale allowed per month requires a permit, but there is no fee for that permit. That permit is good to have a yard sale which will last consecutively for forty-eight hour time period. More or less, um, each night you have to put things away or cover them up. Um, there will be an exemption for community wide, you know, yard sale events like the sixty-one yard sale or any church yard sales, you know, those will not be under this ordinance. Uh, the ordinance or the permits are good for, we're gonna say, ten days in case there is a rain out. They can have it the next weekend, but after that time, you'll need, you know, another one. Uh, signs will not be allowed on utility poles and the signs must be removed twenty-four hours after the end of the yard sale event ordinance, also like garage sales and things. And as far as fines, we're gonna put that under our regular ordinance fines, which is an amount between twenty-five and fifty dollars, which will be determined by the judge.
And all items are removed also.
We thought about, I thought we discussed really in that man, if they violate it, we could, we could take away their rights in future yard sale.
Right, okay, so take them, they would lose their right to have yard sales. Is there like a time period off for you?
For you.
For one year?
For a year, yeah, that sounds good.
That's better than one year, so that's.
If they violate, because they, that's a volunteer, because when they get the, uh, the permit, they're gonna get, uh, you know, tow for how the roof. So if they, granted, they're doing it on their own, it wouldn't be an accident, so they should be disqualified for a year.
Okay.
And then probably, all we want to eliminate the business of yard sales, being a business of yard sale.
Okay, so no lines, just you're gonna lose your right to have them.
Does that, is, is, and that basically what we talked about?
Yeah.
The only thing, the way you said one thing was about.
What's that?
Community wide is exempt, and not totally exempt from the, the ordinance.
Oh, just.
They're exempt from the hours, maybe. It could be extended to extra days if the community are, if I had one thirty body there.
Okay, so there's.
there is a community-wide or, or an order, big, you know, big deal. But they, they still have all the other rules, all the, but they're not exempt totally from it, the scheduling, it could be-
No, that sounds good.
Because they exempt them from their whole thing, because then they could leave the signs, they could deny.
Right, and, and now, if there's a community event, can they still have their, their one, that they should be exempted, or from, from the amount they can have a month, like, so, did they, did they sixty-one?
I mean, I think they, they shouldn't be exempt from that, because most organizations don't have a dozen yard sale, they get together and have a big one, and that's it.
Right, but, but should they, if they participate in a community-wide, when does that count against their one per month that they can have as an individual?
No, 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 no.
Okay, so it's-
I don't know, that's up to the board.
Okay.
No, I, I don't think so, yeah.
Okay, cool. So I'll start working on this, you know, but first, ready, if you don't like it, I'll change it.
Does the year penalty seem a little harsh?
No, to me, if you violate, if, if you voluntarily own your own, violate the law, you should be penalized. And you should be penalized, because, but that's important, if, I'm gonna change that, I, I just don't think it, I just don't, I don't think law violators, I think they should be punished. And I don't think they should be just taxed, I think they should be punished.
Well, to, to what, to the four-year rule? I mean, they, they'll think, well, if I do this wrong, I'm not gonna be out of the yard sale for you. But if you don't do something, they're just gonna keep doing it wrong.
So you think, well, should put a fine possibly?
No, I don't think that's the way it is.
But I see what you're saying, you can give some teeth.
Well, this one year, I hope to give it a teeth.
Well, that's true.
These people that have these yard sales, more than one to two a year, they strive, and it's hurting, taking their right to have one away, be better than a fine.
But if we take away somebody's right to have them for a year, and then next weekend they have another one?
Then they would, they would be, then they would, you would have to go to a fine, because they'd be following the order, Marcus would be going to them and give them order and all that, then they would be violating the order, and then they would get a ticket, go to court for violating order, but, I mean, they, they ways of getting, I mean, it would, it could lead to a fine.
Okay, okay, I just wanna make sure.
It just seems like this is overkill for a yard sale.
It's a violation of the law, violation of order. I could say something, but I'm gonna be there for it. But I think people, I think people get a year, if they, if we're doing, violating ordinance, I think people get a year, a lot of them, people get two or three years. I just don't see where it, I, I mean, get the voluntary violation and you were informed in advance.
As long as they understand in advance, then-
But that's what the purpose, I thought, of coming and getting a permit was, before you would know the rules.
I, I will also work on creating a permit, and also work on a rule sheet that we can give the individuals along with that permit.
That would be a good idea, if they get a permit, they get the list of, wh, dis and doubts.
Exactly, that way, you know, I don't have to make a copy of the ordinance, unhook, you know, and stuff, so-
And that way they know when they get their permit, this is the way it's gonna be.
Right, like a fire permit from the city or something.
I need a motion that we authorize the clerk to draw the ordinance to present to us this next month's meeting, or pay it to their favor.
I make a motion?
That's right.
On paper?
Aye.
The vote? Now, like I say, you may get some phone calls this month, but that's all it's all about, they got a month, and I'm sure they're reading the paper. If he's something like it, and something don't, but if you live next door to somebody running a business in a yard sale, you wouldn't want, I appreciate it. Okay, all right. John Low, you can explain that briefly, how you've been about?
Right, I said, uh, submitted my, um, agenda notice, and also the minutes from the last meeting, which was our budget meeting, which I refer to as a special session. Um, got a call from the Attorney General's office, they are not liking the word "special" in front of the meeting, because they said it could be confused with the word, with, with the closed session. Um, so I will no longer be using the word "special" in front of a meeting, uh, they're just gonna be called "meeting." So that's just an update, so that, just to let everybody know, show some transparency, that I'm following the rules.
Now, other than that, were they satisfied?
They were, that's the only thing they had to say that was coming around.
Any more? The advertisement, with, uh, two minutes between the week and the spring.
Yeah, there, um, was a listing or advertisement made, uh, by a previous clerk, um, to list our water department in the Missouri Manufacturer's Register, um, it was signed under authorized signature. They ran the listing, we stopped payment on the check. They, uh, are willing to accept half of the one-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars that that listing cost, or eighty-six dollars, or if they give us over to a collection agency, so.
I just want to say, we, we're being on mental understanding, it was a new clerk. She probably was looking weak by the company, they got a pretty bad rating. She did it on her own, but rather than wind up with bad ratings or anything, we're gonna go to pay after. Then we can do it, but I don't wanna confuse them, who did it, who did, and then it's the new clerk. And not they. No, we thought he did it, but she, she probably didn't mean no malice by anything, he just, I'm sure he did, she, he really knew his job, and was looking weak by that company, they got a B rating, and most of them referring to how they listed the advertisement. So it just happened, but pay after we get out of, I don't wanna leave one people ever wondering if Joanne did it or not.
Well, yeah, I didn't wanna-
She gets accused of enough, I don't wanna accuse her of enough. Okay, the grant opportunity, we've been invited to our-
Oh, then we have to-
Uh, to make a motion to pay that.
Oh, yeah, we talked about, but we have to, yeah, approve. Move the meeting, second. On paper?
Aye.
The vote? Okay. No, we, it's the grant, but we don't, we're not within a time, or basically, we just couldn't help us right now, we've got, there's just a few more days, and we, we're granting four now, I mean, we're gonna afford ten percent of a dollar. So we got that dime, and we ain't got no extra dimes. So, we're gonna give them, call it, mail to us. Okay, anybody got anything to go now?
We just, do we have, we don't have, since it's on, you know, we don't have to-
No, no, it's just an informational, no action required.
Okay, departmental reports, uh, fire department. Well, John, we had one call for a month, and there's nothing new going on, so, see ya. Good. Glad we don't have no fire, you two, when we did have fire, we had new firemen out there. We used to have fire all weekend, Monday morning, we had people wanting to light up a fire, and I, and you can't get one, we ain't got nothing left to burn no more. Yeah, what did me do, have a great big dance again, that'll do it, because we had a fire, we had a fire every time we had a dance. We got all getting drunk, we had a big fire. Ain't that right?
Pretty close to right, my man.
And all we want, that, in therapy, we know we have a big dance, they definitely get pretty intoxicated for the big fire. Fire or fight, or both? I don't think at least, but I have nothing to report.
Neither.
Bargain Simmons?
I have nothing to report.
I think we've got it all took care of for the winter, ready for that. Water, uh, street? I made a big check while I got all what we down. I don't know, they didn't go out, uh. Water and sewer, the, the dentist didn't have a report, uh, we reported the chlorination was done, and that's all we get. Ain't that right?
That's right.
Uh, animal control?
I haven't heard anything about any ordinance violations, uh, from Officer Beckett or anything.
They've been around looking for a little man for quite a while, I don't know if they ever captured it or what, I hadn't seen it. But, somebody must have captured it, 'cause I don't see it no more. Emergency manager? Citizen participation? Anybody got anything you wanna discuss or talk about? Okay, well, at this time, we will be going to, uh, closed session on litigation. It'll be probably a five-minute closed session, but if we do, if we do have to take care of, it's on litigation, which will be, uh-
Six-one-oh-point-oh-two-one-dash-one.
Okay. I need a motion to go on closed session before that.
I can let the motion go on, the closed session. Uh, section six-one-oh-point-oh-two-one.
I second.
Welcome. Uh, Alderman Kasu. Yeah, you're good, all right, Alderman Doc.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman, or Alderman Smith.
Me.
Marshall, would you please, please?